Okay, it looks like it's five thirty, so we'll go ahead and begin this meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. This is a totally new experience for everybody in the room, so please bear with us. We're gonna do the best we can. I will begin with a roll call.
Nistley?
Here.
Backin' Stos?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lupin?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Carmen?
Here.
Reeker?
Here.
Ostendorf?
Here.
All right, the current copy of the meeting is after Nebraska is posted on the wall in the council chambers and in the conference room. We'll begin with item number two. Approve the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee application for the Small Business Technical Assistance Program. Gary, if you'd be so kind.
Gary Pearson, program administrator for the Quality Growth Fund. And the role of the chamber president at five oh two South Dewey. Like to thank the council for accommodating programs that all have a kind of a critical timing to them. So, thank you very much for meeting tonight under difficult circumstances that we're all dealing with. We've provided you minutes from the meeting of the Quality Growth Fund Committee. Citizens Review Committee that met on March twenty fifth. We, at that time, created three different applications and provided you documentation on each one of those applications. As well as a pretty in-depth narrative of the minutes that occurred during those meetings. Your first agenda item to consider is a request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars funding for professional technical assistance for North Platt area businesses within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of North Platt. Seeking SBA economic injury loans due to the COV ID nineteen pandemic. With a cap of twenty-five hundred dollars per business for per assistance request. It's up to, does not have to be that full twenty-five hundred dollar amount. There, this request comes from our Small Business Assistance Task Force that we quickly assembled in light of everything that was going on and some of the news coming forth from the federal government on some of the assistance that might be available, and we wanted to make sure that North Platt was being as accommodating as possible to help our business community under some very trying circumstances. And they're all feeling the financial impact. As, you know, restrictions have taken hold. I would also like to engage Ty Lucas in this conversation. Ty was very proactive in getting on top of these programs and helping us assemble a team of people that from various backgrounds that came together and brainstormed on how we could come, provide some type of an assistance thing. To get, to encourage businesses to apply for the funding that's available. So, with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Ty at this point to sure.
That'd be fine, explain. If he's kind.
Certainly, thank you, Mayor, and so you guys know I will be abstaining as a voter on this particular issue because I'm a signed applicant in relation to that. And just because of the way that the SBA programs are being utilized through the bank, I don't feel comfortable with that. And Mayor, anywhere along the way, if you guys decide you want to have discussions and you would like me to step out, please just let me know. Real quickly, on the, on the overview of the program, a little background is that when this COVID nineteen thing started, we, we were talking about what can the chamber or the city do to provide support? And the troubles are, as they're outlined in the minutes, that if you take the number of businesses we have in the community and the estimated economic damage that's occurring, we'd need to have twenty-five quality growth funds or fifty quality growth funds to really help anybody, and so it would become a situation of picking businesses you could help and businesses you couldn't. And so we thought, well, what's a way that the city could afford? That the chamber could help facilitate, and we thought about some of the successes and some of the things we learned from the Shot in the Arm program. And real quickly, a summary, the, the government assistance to businesses is really gonna come from the federal government. Because they're really the only government body that has enough money for the masses problem. Or maybe I should say can create enough money for the masses problem. Maybe we'll save that part for another day, but. And so, we quickly, when this committee was developed, at that point in time, the program was that they were gonna use the Economic Disaster, Economic Injury Program, which is a disaster loan program. I can tell you from my experience, I, I've been involved with disaster loans before. The applications are very technical and getting the funding is even more technical. And it takes people that know how to navigate the process, and they are loans directly through SBA, not through local banks. And so the idea was to call on, whether that be attorneys, accountants, retired bankers, you know, maybe, maybe a teacher that had expertise in this area, of people that would be interested in doing some work for business owners to help them apply into these programs, and then we could teach them. We could form an advisory group to teach those people how to navigate the program. And what the idea was, was to bring the most community outreach to help people take advantage of this program. Well, since that idea was developed and, and in right about the same time we were submitting this to the Quality Growth Fund for review, or the committee for review, and their recommendation, the CARE Act was passed, which really has three components to it. From a generic sense that, that tie into these federal programs for small businesses. Or they have three capital programs. I mean, there's tax savings and other programs, but they have three programs to get capital to business. One is a small emergency bridge loan, which is ten to twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's for emergency situations. That can be facilitated either directly through the SBA or through a bank, and it's a very simple program. The second program is the Economic Injury Program, which is the program we targeted here. Which is a very technical, and it's a, it's a difficult program to navigate and needs more technical assistance. And that's what the focus of this is. And the third program is called the Paycheck Protection Program. That's the program that's been very touted in the media because it has the grant aspects or the loan forgiveness aspects, which is, which is kind of the free money from the government to help solve the tremendous economic damage that some of these businesses are having. Well, when the CARE Act was passed, and then it went to the US Treasury to, to begin the implementation of it, they decided to do that program directly through the banks, and they actually funded a technical assistance from SBA baked into that. So in that program, the, the business owner gets a loan that's forgivable based on the employment formula. And then the, they, they pay an interest rate, which also is very minimal. The SBA then pays a bank, any, any bank that is registered with SBA, which is many of the banks in our market, they get a very modest fee for facilitating the program, and then they pay the technical assistance provider. So that program will not need this money, and that will be the most popular program because it's gonna be the fastest way to the capital because the banks will facilitate it. So personally, I think that was a very good part of the CARE Act, as long as the logistics work. But we still worry about the businesses that have major economic dam, damage that's beyond just what two and a half months worth of payroll is. The ones that, and in particular nonprofits which are eligible into this program as well. That there is a group that are gonna need technical assistance, and there is gonna be some costs associated with that. So this program would fund at least a hundred grants and probably more. That would be used not to pay banks or not to pay the government or not to pay landlords, but for a business owner to pay a technical assistance, assistant provider of their choice. Up to twenty-five hundred dollars and get reimbursed to help them complete that program. I would tell you that to me, the, the twenty-five hundred dollars probably is not gonna make or break most businesses. But it is a show of support by the community, and it also will be a tremendous awareness. It, it's a little bit of a marketing campaign that, that it gives our chamber something to go out to the business community and say, our city and our chamber wanna support you, and we want to help, and we have this assistance, which will then create more awareness, which we hope then means more businesses stay open and more employees stay employed, which is the ultimate goal of the program. And so with that, I'll just stop, and certainly Gary and I would be happy to answer any questions about the proposal.
I would also add that this comes with a five, nothing recommendation for approval from the Quality Growth Committee.
Real quick question, how did you guys come up with the number of twenty-five hundred dollars on the cost for, you know, the fees to do it?
Talking with the banking community, accountants, people who have had past SBA experience.
Cause I talked to someone, they said it would take them maybe a couple hours, and you're talking only a few hundred dollars, not twenty-five hundred.
A lot of it would depend on how complicated each, the business structure is as well, but Ty, you probably are more of an expert on that than I am.
Yeah, Andrew, I would tell you that if, if somebody just simply went online and submitted an application, that wouldn't be as much time. But that Economic Disaster, or that Economic Injury Program, which is under the Disaster Assistance Program, you go to the website, and there's six or seven forms that need filled out, and then you submit, and they may or may not have some questions, and then once you get an SBA authorization, that's where the real work begins, is once you're approved, because in many cases, you have to like file liens on collateral, and you may have to hire a title company to do some, provide some title opinions. You actually have to go record the documents typically yourself, and you have to take various steps that often involve a lawyer in finishing up some of that to actually get the money. And so the, the application process isn't too cumbersome unless you're somebody that isn't very familiar with filling out those types of forms. And I, I think twenty-five hundred is gonna more than cover technical assistance in most situations. If I had to guesstimate, I would guesstimate that most of them would have in the, you know, one thousand to two thousand dollar range of technical assistance if they were a, a meaningful loan sized and were completed all the way to funding.
I have a question, Gary or Ty, whoever will answer it. It seems to me that after you have filed several of these forms, there should be some similarities between every form. I know each one is gonna be separate and different, but it would seem to me the further you go down the road, keep filing these forms, there has to be some likeness between the form that you're filing, and it seems to me that it would become less cumbersome as you go along. Is that correct?
I, I agree, Glenn, that it does become more, less cumbersome as somebody has worked through these on a repeated basis. I agree with that, yes.
The other thing too, though, is the, the supporting documentation that'll have to be provided is more extensive on what Ty's talking about. You know, you're gonna be looking at tax returns, income statements from QuickBooks, probably financial statements. There's gonna be a document gathering thing, so I, I think that could, you know, that, that's what's gonna make them different, each one, Glenn. The forms will be the same, but gathering the documentation because it's gonna depend upon how sophisticated the business program is, how large they are, will they have computerized QuickBooks or whatever?
Yeah, and a lot of the, the businesses we're looking at, trying to assist also, obviously have limited staffs. So they don't have a CPA on staff, they don't have a legal counsel on staff. They, you know, they, they deal with probably a local accountant on filing their taxes, and, and they're struggling enough. So we wanted to, you know, it's all about giving them a lift up, you know, and, and kind of a trying time to try to help them in any way that we can. And as somebody that's filled out multiple forms in my lifetime, when it comes to grant applications and everything else, experience definitely helps you from a time standpoint, but the materials that have to be gathered and written up on each one are as diverse as the, the business itself. So it, the fact gathering and all the research and all the, the documentation is still very, very time consuming. And, and again, depending on the complexity of, of the individual business.
And you're anticipating like a hundred people or a hundred different firms will be applying for this help?
It, it would accommodate up to a hundred at the maximum. We don't anticipate every, all of it will be maximum. We've had twelve different businesses or retired people step forward, said they would be willing to, to be one of these technical provide, assistance providers. All of them are, you know, high-quality, high-integrity type people. I, I don't think they're out to gouge, you know, the city or the taxpayer. It's all about, you know, their, how, how they feel about trying to help the local business community, and of course, our, our purpose is to try to help as many as we can survive. And the longer the saying goes on, the tougher it's gonna be for them, the greater struggle it's gonna be, and, and, and a lot of it's the great unknown. I mean, Ty can tell you that the programs itself have changed on a daily, sometimes hourly basis that's coming out from the Fed, so, you know, it's gonna take a lot of research, a lot of self-education on, on everybody's part to, to help in this manner.
But when the program, when this first started, I thought that if we did this, we'd be coming back for a second round of funding. But when the PPP or the Paycheck Protection Program was established in the manner it was, I think that moved, you know, seventy or eighty percent of the applications from that program to the program that won't require any funding and has its own baked-in technical assistance support. So what's funny is the, the program that the, the federal, the CARE Act finished up with has the same, kind of the same component that we've had developed for the first program. And so I, at first I thought, well, maybe we should think about reducing this funding. But especially with the Quality Renew, Growth Fund renewal pending, and the needs there's gonna be throughout this year for this, I, I still think that this allocation is a good idea, but I, I would be surprised if we had a hundred apps or more than a hundred apps in this particular program. There will be well more than a hundred apps in the community under the three programs, but the one particular program that this would apply to, I think that this allocation will well cover, whereas we maybe didn't think that before the other two programs were outlined.
And, and only use the allocation that is through the request process. So anything that's left over goes back into the Quality Growth Fund.
Okay, so what if I'm wrong, Ty and Gary, but this is not, if, if you submit the paperwork, you don't automatically get twenty-five hundred dollars. It's up to twenty-five hundred dollars. So if I submit a, a bill from my attorney for a thousand dollars, I don't get twenty-five hundred dollars, I get a thousand dollars.
That is correct.
And the business owner selects who they work with, and then, I mean, if the chamber saw something egregious, they could wave their hand. But in general, it's designed that if a business owner was working on this program and brought in a legitimate bill from the technical assistance provider of their choice, then the chamber would reimburse that up to twenty-five hundred or pay it directly up to twenty-five hundred. So yeah, we think a lot of them would be under twenty-five hundred.
I have a question regarding that. What if, what if we have an entity that owns multiple businesses? How do we structure that? Does each business that that entity owns, do they, are they eligible for twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollar reimbursement?
I know that was our thought in the proposal was that somebody may, SBA has criteria on how many applications you can make, and it's, it's by business entity, but they also have affiliation tests that they use as well. And so I think our thought was, was that if somebody was qualified under SBA to apply for multiple applications under that program for multiple business entities, they could then also apply for multiple grants. But we were also working on the assumption that they have multiple employee bases to protect, you know, that they're trying to protect to.
I apologize, I think I cut you off, but you were starting to say something.
Oh, okay. The one thing I wanna say, I wanna get clarification, there are essentially three programs here. And the one program is, is pretty straightforward, as I understand. The, the forum says it'll take less than two hours to prepare, prepare and to be online, and you don't have to submit supporting documentation. Do you intend to reimburse for that, or I, I would estimate that the cost of doing that would be considerably less than the standard SBA loan. And the one good thing about it is I understand they, they should get money within like in three weeks. That's the projection. Other than the fact that the IRS has laid off after employees because of the COVID nineteen, but anyway, that's a side issue. Yeah, what's, what's a?
That's the PPP program that Ty was talking to, that has its own component to, to cover those third-party administrators if they're, if they're needed or that technical assistance, which is ironic that they were kind of thinking the same thing. There are people, they have difficulty, you know, that aren't used to SBA forms and, and that kind of thing, so they covered it. But the two more complicated programs certainly are, is not the case.
Actually, Gary, I'm sorry to interrupt you this way, but the, the program Mr. Nistley's referring to is that Emergency Bridge Loan Program.
My, my.
And, and that, that is a more simplistic program that's designed to get money faster. It should have very minimal cost that, that I think we'd have no concerns with people seeking reimbursement from. I think the ten thousand dollar portion of that program should have no cost associated with it. That if somebody tried to go to twenty-five, it might have a little bit, but the, it's really the one program, the Economic Injury Program, that would have a more significant technical assistance and cost need with it. But I, I don't see any problems, I mean, I have, would have no concerns with the chamber reimbursing costs under either of those two programs that have costs associated with them, knowing that the small program would be a much smaller cost.
And, and we do have this task force assembled, so they obviously have the background, the expertise for it. So if we have any questions, got a wealth of resources there, I'm not gonna arbitrarily make those decisions just as the president that signs off on some of these documentations.
And they are all volunteering their time, just for the record.
Real quick here, I noticed in the notes, you know, Ken talked about until the end of twenty twenty being the period, and then this would cycle off. Was, was that codified into the motion? So you guys wanted the end of the year, was there a reason you guys chose end of the year versus like a ninety or a hundred and twenty day rolling?
It was largely just because of the unknown, how long this thing might drag out or wherever. But obviously, if there's a window of time of applying, that's gonna supersede this. They just didn't wanna have to cut it off at a certain time, and the ball gets kicked further down the road, and we have to come back and, and seek your permission to go beyond it.
I guess I'm kind of wondering here, if, if, if an entity owns a multitude of different businesses, and, and this is really to help those that are struggling financially, I'm wondering if we should limit the number of businesses that one entity owns that would be eligible for this funding. It seems to me like the, the smaller entities, the guys that, that are smaller businesses are gonna have a more difficult time recovering some of their expenses, and I think that's what, what this whole program is designed for.
If, if you would opt to put some kind of affiliation requirement on, I would be specific because if you had somebody that owned a business, and then they were partnered with somebody in another business and partnered with somebody else in another business, that could get complicated in terms of how to test that. So I, I don't have any concern, I understand your concern, but if, if we, if the council puts that limitation in there, I would suggest being specific about, for example, no, for example, no owner of fifty percent or more of a business can be involved in more than three grants or something of that nature. So it's just very clear to the business owners in the chamber how, how that would work. The, the SBA does kind of naturally, i- if you do align that, if the grant is aligned with having a valid application with SBA, they'll only accept, I think, one of these program, one of this type of loan, economic disaster, per business entity tax ID number. Now, if somebody had a flood a year ago and was in one of these programs and now applied for COVID nineteen, they may, they could have two of these, but we haven't had a flood disaster program in, in our area. But the SBA does have limitations on how many somebody could apply for.
Hi, just a simplification of the whole process. If I submit the, the application, if the form's all filled out, then what happens? Where do I go to get my money? Do I go to my banker? Do I go to SBA, or how do I do that?
Well, that's why we were concerned about this particular program and, and why we're happy the other two programs are out there because this program is a direct SBA program. And so how it works is you go to the website and you get the forms, and it's six or seven forms, I think. You fill them out, and you either fill them out online or you mail them to their office in, the office in Texas that accepts these applications. At that point, your application goes in line with the others, and if it's deemed a completed application, the SBA will process that within a certain time period, wherever their time period is at that point in time. Then they issue an SBA authorization, which is like a loan approval. And then that's where the fun starts because what they typically do is advance you a certain amount of money right upon, once the authorization is issued. I know in the case of the Carney and Eastern Nebraska floods, they would do fifty thousand at the time of, of approval. When that happens, you, that money then goes to the owner's bank account. Then they give you a very, these authorizations are usually twenty or twenty-five pages, and they tell you the things you have to do to get the rest of the money, and that might be things like filing a lien on your real estate. So if you come to my bank for a real estate loan, we give you the money and we file a lien on the real estate, maybe working with a local attorney or title company. Well, in this world, you and your attorney go and file the lien on yourself for SBA. And so it's just a weird process. It's, it's kind of strange, honestly. And then you have to provide documentation back to them, and then they allocate funding on the program as you meet the criteria and the disbursements, and so the work on these really does start once you get approved. And that's where you will incur some more expense, whether that be attorney, accountant, or technical assistance expense, and getting from that first approval to getting all of the money allocated under the program. Especially in the larger ones. If somebody would have a, you know, several hundred thousand or million dollar type economic injury that they applied for, you would have a pretty complex funding process on it.
Thank you. Now, just to add on to what Glenn just said, so during this process, Ty, then who's gonna control the cost of the Quality Growth Fund money? Is that the chamber? So if we have a hundred businesses that apply off, you know, hypothetically, you gotta control all this. So when they apply for their applications and do X, Y, Z, are you guys gonna be able to handle all that?
Well, we, what we'll request is obviously the invoice. Evidence of the filing, once we know the filing, we kind of know the complexity of the business, how large it is and, and so forth. We have questions we could ask, you know, at the time of submission, but that's what you hire us to do. So my answer is yes, we'll, we'll handle.
I would also ask, I would also ask if you guys decide to move forward with this to consider making it clear that a for-profit and nonprofit business can apply for this. Unless you have any concerns with that, Gary?
No.
Say that again, Ty, you said nonprofit and?
That, that would be my suggestion because what I'm starting to learn as we go through this process is that many of the nonprofits don't have much of payroll component because of the nature of nonprofits, and the other programs are very payroll-centered. And so I think the nonprofits will be using this program more than the other programs, where the for-profit businesses will likely use the Paycheck Protection Program first. And so I think it would be a, a positive clarification if that's what the council feels is in the best interest of the city to, to clarify that both profit and nonprofit businesses can apply for the twenty-five hundred grant for that, for that purpose.
Any, any specific money allocated in this program is all business-related. None of it is administrative cost. I mean, as far as, you know, as administering the program, that's, you know, that's part of our, our overall partnership with the city and the county and the business community.
You guys are good with, and you guys are good with non-cyber members coming to you saying, hey, we.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's taxpayer money. I think, you know, we look at it as, we show them that the value of a chamber, maybe they then decide to join down the road, so.
I agree with that, or Ty, whether either one, you're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Up to.
Yes, up to that. Okay, where is that money going to be, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Does it stay in the? Does it stay in the fund that it's in now and you draw it out 20, 30, 40,000 at a time or how is that?
Well, yeah, obviously, every procedure has a timeline to it. So just to give you an example, we've done with programs in the past like shot in the arm and so forth. Uh, we'll make her say it's 250, we'll make a request for 50 or 100 because this is going to be a fairly rapid response. And we don't want to wait cutting checks to people, you know, if uh we have to go back through a two-week process with the city. So once you allocate it, we work that out with Dawn and Jim. And uh, you know, and and then we we keep our accounting, Dawn keeps exceptionally good records, and we always know where the where the dollars are. So um, we've done that on shot in the arm work NP, our examples of that where we leave the bulk of it that we know that's not going to get used right away in interest-bearing um accounts. And so that's the way we have operated uh throughout the process.
Well, you won't go to Dawn and say, we need 250, he'll go ahead and take it in bunches, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if we if we see it a a real rapid response in a quick period of time, obviously, everybody, that's why we wanted to get a program like this in place. So everybody, you know, can you imagine the massive uh amount of applications are going to be on a nationwide basis? You know, we want to try to help our local businesses um get in line as quickly as they can. So uh, we'll just deal with it on administrative standpoint and make sure it's not so cumbersome that we're just asking for 10, 10, 10, 10, 10, you know.
Thank you.
That's my other other concern that I would probably have as a as a person is we earmark 2,500, so I just hope that we have enough trust and integrity in this system that people are not just going to bill every one of them 2,500 bucks. And if so, how are you going to control that? Are you going to be able to monitor if one business spends two hours on it and one spends 10 hours on it? The difference in costs.
Didn't you explain that by saying you you're going to have to bring in receipts that you have spent?
Well, you'll have an invoice from the third service and, you know, like any uh attorney or accountant, they'll usually document the time spent on it, you know, and we're not going to say there, sit there and say, no, we don't trust you, you know, it a lot of it still comes back to trust. And people have been in business a long time. I think they're used to to doing business in that manner, or they wouldn't have been around this long. So, you know, it it still comes back to integrity, to honesty, trust. Uh, but I, you know, I've I've dealt with uh um, very few people that I would consider a good chamber member said that don't have that call.
Yeah, and I hope that too, and I I'm all for this. I'm just, I'm just concerned that somebody doesn't try, take advantage of the system.
Jim, I would, I would share with you that that's one reason that we set it at 2,500. We were trying to get it high enough to really provide help with a more complicated situation, but low enough that uh abuse would be hedged to a point. Um, I don't expect abuse. I don't think our community's programmed that way. But that was a big i- in the discussions on an amount per grant, that was a big discussion item. So your points uh well, well taken.
Have you prepared a sample or a proposed motion? Does anybody, we need to just. I'm sorry, Ed.
I would, I guess, I would like to make a motion to are are we intending to adopt this as it's presented? Is that where we're at right now? And and I I would make a motion that would end this petition to uh say that uh no individual can receive i- is eligible to receive monies from the grant that owns more than 50% of any of three businesses.
Let me try to do a motion first and then we'll maybe do some amendments later.
Okay.
And this is going to be a stab, guys, so I'll do the best I can. Uh, I move that the uh council authorize an expenditure up to $250,000 from the Quality Growth Fund uh for the purpose of providing small grants to all profit and nonprofit. Is that right, Ty? Uh, businesses?
Yes.
Okay, all pro- nonprofit and profit businesses uh to pay for independent third-party costs associated with SBA, technical assistance, loan packaging and funding and related expenses um uh with uh the eligibility to be up to $2,500 per operating business entity. That's my motion.
Second.
Uh, you know, I would see, I'm just a suggestion, let's maybe try to make a shot at that motion. And then Ed, if you want to throw an amendment in there, we could consider that. Would that be okay?
Is it the good? Offer the amendment?
Yeah, I think we'll do that motion first. It's just an idea, get that approved, and then if you have some suggestions to find to that. Is that okay with you, Ed?
That's fine.
All right.
So there is a motion on the floor in a second. Um, did you get all of that, Dawn?
If Jim could repeat, I've I've got, I hold most of it.
Yes, because that was quite a bit.
It was.
Terry, did you bring a court reporter with you here?
We should have.
You go through it again. Now, whether it's going to be the same.
This meeting is recorded, right? So we could just rewind it on the meeting and then write it down verbatim.
And we can.
Yeah, that'd be better than being doing it again.
It was a good motion.
Yes.
It was very good. As long as everybody understands what that motion said. Okay. Well, we'll we'll take a roll call, Dawn, if you'd be so kind.
Miss Lee?
Aye.
Beckenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Will abstain from voting, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Reeker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes with one extension. There'll be seven ayes and one extension.
Yes.
Ed, did you want to add a qualification to that?
Hey, I would, I would offer an amendment to that uh proposal there that we just approved to uh say such that uh no individual that owns greater than 50% in any of three businesses is eligible to apply for the grant.
For for more than three?
No, more than three.
Three? So if you own three businesses, you could go up to three, but no more than that?
That's my intent. Yes, Jim.
It needs a second or it'll die.
Mayor? Mike? I, I think once the motion has been moved, seconded, passed, I think the amendment is out of time. That's, I got reaction to Ed's motion. I understand his intent and intent might be fine. That's not up to me to comment on, but I think it's out of time now.
Okay, thank you. There was not a second to that motion, uh, so I believe it dies at this point. Okay, well, back to the motion pass and we'll move on to item number two. Okay?
Okay, this is a request from the Nebraska Main Street Network for $4,800, which would be a 40% matching grant to the Certified Local Government Grant Program uh of the City of North Platte for hosting a workshop in North Platte this fall for education on redevelopment and revitalization of underutilized upper floors in the downtown buildings.
Thank you, Gary, but I think I need to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind if I could.
Yep.
Put this out for. All right, item number three. That's approved the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee application for the Nebraska Main Street Network Inc., Network Inc. for workshop on upper floor development in the downtown for $4,800.
I knew that we approved the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee's application for Nebraska Main Street Inc. for a workshop on upper floor development in the downtown.
My apologies.
It was quite all right, Gary.
Uh, we do have Elizabeth Chase, who is the executive director of Nebraska Main Street Network on the phone. If she can connect with us, and I'll let her explain the programs. This is their request.
Okay. Are you on there, Elizabeth?
Yep. Can you guys hear me okay?
Uh, you might speak a little bit louder. Would you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Chase. My address is P O Box 6808, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68506.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for having us come and talk about this project. Um, as I said, my name's Elizabeth Chase. I'm the executive director of the Nebraska Main Street Network. Um, while we're the applicant to the Quality Growth Fund for the grant, uh, it's a matching grant in partnership with the North Platte Historic Preservation Commission. Um, we're also partnering with the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation um as well as the North Platte Downtown Association to put this workshop on. Um, we've been wanting to do this training for a while, but couldn't find a community that had a housing need, uh, also had upper floor housing development opportunities, was a member of the Main Street Program, which by the way, North Platte is one of the members of our organization, and the Historic Preservation Program like North Platte has um in partnership with the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, because we're a partner with North Platte, we feel like we're really not outside of the group making application for this funding and in what it is, it's a match to a grant from this State Historic Preservation Office for $7,200, and we're providing the 40% match through the Quality Growth Funds. Um, we're looking at this uh as a huge opportunity. You know, with this whole coronavirus situation throwing a wrench into things, this workshop is one of those uh long view actions. Uh, you know, right now, everybody's trying to fix things immediately. This is one of those things for over the long term, helping the community build some resiliency so that it can weather things like this in the future. Um, the workshop is actually geared specifically towards North Platte, and whatever tools and knowledge that come out of the workshop will benefit the community directly. Um, the workshop was actually created to help owners learn how to rehab vacant or up, underutilized upper floors, turning them into income-producing properties. Um, the workshop looks at ways that North Platte can make it easier for building owners to rehab the spaces and what kind of, you know, impact the development might have on the community with these spaces, providing housing and perhaps some other uses. So in turn, the upper floor occupancy will help increase the number of consumers downtown that in turn helps those businesses, adding to not only the community's diversity of housing, but also contributing to population retention, especially those folks that you want to retain, the young professionals, the baby boomers. And with the full utilization of downtown buildings helps expand the tax base and contributes to job and business creation. So um this workshop helps people figure out how to do these things because it is difficult, and we know it's difficult. Um, but uh, you know, we're looking at these funds to help leverage not only the match to that CLG grant, but also other sources of funding to help us put on this workshop for North Platte.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just, real quick, uh, I was on the last call we had on this uh subject, and were you gonna add a a surcharge, I guess, for our registration fee to help pay for the cost?
We're, we're going to charge a registration fee because there, we will invite people from outside of North Platte to attend this workshop. Um, and we had talked about that in the, in the Quality Growth Fund uh Citizens Committee meeting. Um, but in order for us to be able to pay for the whole workshop, we've got to be able to charge a registration fee to help recoup all of those costs. Um, you know, and just like the earlier uh, the fund request, um, you know, we're used to receipting and keeping track of things in detail, and we realize that this will be a reimbursement after the workshop is over, but we're planning on utilizing uh businesses in North Platte to provide all the things that we need for the workshop. So none of the money will be spent really outside of uh North Platte uh from this fund. But yeah, we will be charging a registration fee for everybody.
Okay.
If I'm wrong.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, did you have something?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was thinking at that meeting uh I I attended on the phone, that there was some discussion of reimbursing North Platte out of part of those registration uh fees. Is is that correct?
Uh, this is Gary Pearson, uh, that had been uh brought up by one of the committee members. Uh, but then after a thorough discussion on the topic, uh, other committee members felt that uh complicated the program too much, and they just wanted to have it be pretty clean for the grant application and for kind of the nominal uh fee compared to a lot of requests that they just felt that, you know, the program itself is going to have other costs that need to be recouped through registration costs. Didn't want to add on to it. The other component of of that was this will attract other people in Western and Central Nebraska to attend, and obviously it gives us a chance to showcase North Platte. They probably go spend a little money while they're here, so it does have a residual economic benefit for the community as well.
Um, I uh, I recently attended a a brief workshop at the espresso shop that was done by the State Historical Society downtown. It was a, I think, a 5:30 workshop, and it wasn't near, I mean, they did a really good job, but it's not the caliber of program that they're talking here. And the espresso shop was full with standing room only of people who were anxious to talk about the historical designation downtown. So I tend to think this would be very well attended based on what I saw at that particular workshop.
And you're, Elizabeth, you're talking about having this at the Prairie Arts Center. Was that, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, because we want to, we want to try and keep it downtown uh as much as possible. Their capacity is 115, so we should be, we should be pretty good. And and, you know, really, this is geared towards the folks who own buildings in downtown North Platte to kind of help them better understand, um, overcome the misperceptions that are out there on how difficult this can be um in the parts of doing upper floor rehabs. Uh, you know, kind of overcoming that, uh, those obstacles too, and whether that, you know, leads to some changes with codes, uh, with financing mechanisms, uh, you know, other ways to make this doable because you you really want to have full utilization of your buildings downtown because that really generates good uh tax revenue for the community and kind of alleviates the burden on all the others that are paying into the system.
Elizabeth, was this a one-day workshop, two-day?
This is a, uh, one, one and a half days.
Okay.
And the two, the two gentlemen that that do this, um, one of them uh did this in the Quad Cities uh with buildings in there, small downtown, and then um architect from the State Historic Preservation Office in Illinois. And they were, they're the two that have put this program together, so they know all the the pitfalls and all of the 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 tools that can be used to overcome some of the challenges that we all face in in, you know, reusing old buildings and getting them occupied and people using them.
Uh, Elizabeth did also mention one of the, the other reasons North Platte was um chosen for this uh was uh because of the investment the city is putting in downtown right now and the the huge commitment you've made to that revitalization.
Have they set a date for this meeting at all?
We haven't set an exact date, but we're looking at October, November, probably early November at the latest.
Thank you.
We have to wait to find out if we get the the certified local govern, if North Platte gets the certified local government uh grant. We helped put that together with Judy Clark.
Okay, I'll ask for a roll call, though.
Miss Lee?
Aye.
Beckenstoss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Carmen?
Aye.
Reeker?
Aye.
Ostendorf?
Aye. Okay, motion passes eight zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Elizabeth. If you. Thank you everyone. Thank you, Elizabeth, if you're still on there. Okay, item number five. Four. Approved the Quality Growth Fund Citizens Review Committee application for leverage grant funding for a proposal rail access park in Lincoln County for seventy-five thousand dollars.
We approved quality growth funds, citizens review committee application for leverage grant funding for a proposed rail access park in Lincoln County.
Second.
Stay away from the microphone this time. We've talked a little bit about this, the idea of a rail park somewhere in Lincoln County, and it's certainly part of the five-year plan of action that the Chamber has recently, the process we went through in doing that. One of the economic development frustrations, I think, the community of North Platte has experienced, and certainly I experienced that coming here from the outside, coming into the community to understand the complexities of being able to access rail in Lincoln County because of the uniqueness of Bailey Yard and the congestion that the railroad has there. So largely, it's kind of been an unwritten policy, but it was one that was pretty administered pretty toughly when it come to being able to have a business or industry prospects that had a rail need to find a site in Lincoln County that could accommodate that because of those restrictions that existed. So knowing that the railroad is going through this efficiency planning and kind of streamlining things, and you have more mobilization from automation, that it kind of opened the door for those additional discussions. So we initiated those discussions with some of the top rail executives with the Union Pacific, the CEO, the Chief Operating Officer, some of their industrial development people, told them about the frustration we had dealing with business and industry prospects, and at the same time, they want to know what North Platte was doing, Lincoln County was trying to do to diversify our economy. They had the same motive we do, and wanting to diversify the economy and make the communities attractive in trying to attract top-notch employees and residents to move here. So through that collaboration, we were able to sit down with the railroad, look at strategic locations throughout Lincoln County that they would be accepting of being able to approve a rail access. If it's properly designed, all the elements are in place that we know that, that we're dealing with. And if we have a master plan put together, knowing where this potentially could be, and have all of the due diligence done when it comes to siding, zoning, environmental issues, and engineering schematic on how it could look, then when we do have that industry prospect, and we already have the railroad's blessing on it, then we can make things happen much quicker. Business industry traditionally does not have two to three years to wait around for all the hurdles to go through. They got too many options to go elsewhere. So by having this in place, we'll be able to market North Platte, Lincoln County differently than what we have been able to do in the past. The railroad has embraced it. It's been great to work with. We, after we've had these meetings, we will, and did our due diligence and a search. We've talked with some of the key players involved in a particular location. And at the same time, in P P D, Nebraska Public Power District, which the city is a, is our service provider here for the community from electrical provider, and has a huge investment in the, in Lincoln County with the power plant here and everything, they have what's called a site-ready assistance program. And every year, they allow up to fifty thousand dollars of grants for planning purposes. You can apply up to twenty-five thousand. That being the case with most business parks, and certainly rail parks, have a major cost component when it comes to master plan. So obviously, we would apply for the maximum amount of twenty-five thousand. And to have the leverage that's going to give us an edge over other communities and knowing what the expenses are going to be and putting this kind of a master plan together, we made the request, or our Economic Development Committee has made the request for a seventy-five thousand dollar matching leverage grant from Quality Growth Fund to apply for M P P D's Grant Assistance Program. That deadline is April tenth. So we've done our due diligence and trying to get the application together. I will preface this by saying I'm not going to talk about the location for obvious reasons for negotiations that are ongoing right now. But all the pieces of the puzzle are coming together quite nicely, and to pick up an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to assist that and that as in that from outside sources certainly is attractive. That's why we brought it forward at this time.
Gary, is it fair to say, because I can remember a couple of years back, that you have been fighting for this for a long, long time?
Well, I think North Platte maybe had. I was coming from the outside, come to North Platte, having dealt with a lot of different manufacturing companies and industries that needed rail access. I came from a community that readily had that available. And it put us in the, in the game at all times, and we were quite successful in landing several of those companies. When I came here, I thought, well, this is going to be an ideal location. You got Bailey Yard, the world's largest rail center. That's got to be really attractive to business and industry. And what's quite the opposite, you know, the impediment that was there. Obviously, you wouldn't trade with Bailey Yard as meant for anything, you know, for any kind of rail access, because we're talking about smaller payrolls and jobs, but the things that are going to help us diversify the economy. When you look at the manufacturing base in North Platte, we've got one true manufacturing company in the whole community, and that's Masonite Door. And they don't need, they obviously don't need rail access, but that is a testimony to where, you know, it's hindered the community over time, probably from attracting some of those type of companies that need rail access. I can tell you when we get proposals from company, when companies or state of Nebraska that has an inquiry, inquiry on somebody looking for a Nebraska location or Midwest location, you go down through the checkbox and providing all the information about your community, one of the very first things they ask, rail access available? We'd always have to say no. Multiple times, we never heard another word after that. We tried to make it as attractive as possible, but it didn't give us a fighting chance on some of those companies that are heavily dependent. Because they're going to take time.
I can speak to that too, and Gary's absolutely right. You know, I've worked on stuff around here for over thirty years, and we have tried on numerous occasions to find a place to access the railroad, and it just never has worked out. So if they're willing to come to the table, I think we ought to jump at the opportunity to try and see if we couldn't find a place to be able to access the railroad.
With the amount of seagoing container cargo that Union Pacific is moving these days, the, this is a really rapidly changing environment, and logistics master planning is the number one priority at the Nebraska D E D right now, or at least it was before COVID nineteen started. But this has been designated by the governor and Nebraska D E D office as, as the highest priority in the state, I believe, is the master planning and development of logistics, because they see, they see the cities of our size in Nebraska as being tremendous targets to grow their logistics operations, whether that be transloading, manufacturing, even warehouse storage, offloading to the trucking side, as probably the most probable increase of high-quality jobs in towns of our size in Nebraska, and I, and I believe they're right. So I'm just thrilled. This was a, in the six or eight years I was on the chamber board, this was a topic every year, and we kept getting stymied, and I know you spent a lot of years on before that, as I think Glenn did too. So this, I'm, I'm just really excited that Union Pacific's collaborating with you on this, Gary.
Yeah, and another thing is that Lincoln County really is in a very good position, in my opinion, for this as well because of the proximity, the railroad tracks to Highway thirty. So there, you know, it's pretty easy to make a connection between truck and rail, which is one of the things that when Greenbrier came and that they were really interested in to be able to have access both by rail and by truck. So again, we're situated pretty well in that respect of the proximity of the two different transportation modes.
I can remember you talking about this when you first came here, and it was just, no. It was that simple. We're not going to do it. So I think this is a great opportunity. It's a great thing right there.
Okay, shall we do a low call, please?
Missley.
Aye.
Backenstoss.
Aye, aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Rieker.
Aye.
Ostendorf.
Aye. And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you everyone. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. All right, item number five, approved resolution to authorize the creation and funding of a revolving fund pursuant to the authority set forth in section one five one point two five seven of the North Platte Code of Ordinances Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, all disbursements from such fund to be approved by the city administrator.
With the approved resolution to authorize the creation and funding of a revolving fund pursuant to the authority set forth in section one fifty-one point two five seven of the North Platte Code of Ordinances Maintenance and Occupancy Code in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, all disbursements from such bond to be approved by the city administrator.
Second.
What might be some of the reasons to use some of this fifty thousand dollars? Well.
Jim, can you answer that?
Yeah. You know, what that would be used for is if we have a particular property around town or whatever that has some issues with it, money could be used out of that fund to either go in there and remove the problem, or it also could be used to go in there and assist a owner of that property in fixing up that property. Currently, we have a fund in the Development Department's budget that we've been using for the same type of things. So what this would do basically is just put the name of that fund under the name that the ordinance references, and I guess, if you will, give us a couple of different opportunities to go in and address some of those problem properties. So if we voted in favor of this, Jim, will that take it out of the general fund then? That would be where the money would come from.
I'm sorry, you, you had it allocated in another.
Right, we have another fifty thousand dollars designated through the Development Department that we've used to tear down properties. We work a lot with Lincoln County Community Development Corporation. We work a lot with Habitat for Humanity. We work also at times with private owners to go in and demolish homes or buildings on those properties and put them back to a position where those properties could then be developed with either a new home, a new building, a new business, whatever it might be. So what we would do is simply set up this fund, and that would allow Dawn to work with a local institution, which I know that until we get this approved, we haven't done yet, but go out and actually set up a separate fund that would fall into line again with the ordinance. So there wouldn't be two separate fifty thousand dollar funds? There would be one fifty thousand dollar? I would suggest that that would be correct. However, I would say that at least the way our budget has already been approved, there may be some duplication of that at least until the end of this fiscal year.
You know, the, I've been trying to attend the, the group that's the working that the mayor assembled in regards to the substandard housing, which by the way, I think that group's doing really good work and addressing these things, and I know that this is a recommendation from that group in particular, or people along that group have talked about this, to provide that little extra distance with the fund. So it's not just tagged necessarily, for lack of a better term, but it's actually more independent for the fund, and that's been a request of people among that group. Just, I think from therein, they, they, well, one, they feel it's a clear compliance to the ordinance, but second, they feel that it really shows, hey, this money's there for this, this purpose, and I think that's been some of the thrust of that group. So this is a item that's been, I don't know if it's been formally recommended by that group, but it's been a discussion point in that group.
So am I understanding correctly, if we adopt this, that we're going to be required then to have a health inspector? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. There's already in place statutory language or ordinance language that provides for a health inspector. This is just a step that is, I suggested, has been at least informally requested by individuals who are concerned about the substandard housing. They received a lot of fair amount of publicity last fall.
I'm familiar with that part.
Okay.
So I guess I'm still confused. Do we, in order for us to access these funds, do we have to have a health inspector?
No, the funds, the ordinance also provides, the last line of the resolution talks about the money must be approved by the city administrator.
So we don't need to authorize a hiring of a health inspector then?
That's, that's not part of this resolution.
Oh, I think that group's been generally developed a solution on that issue. I don't know if that's perfect time to get into that, but I think they do have that generally figured out, right, Jim?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
And how will that be accommodated? Is that, I mean, are they, are we wanting to establish a health inspector?
That's part of the request, or part of the suggestion. I've not seen, there's no formal demand or resolution. It's just an informal group anyway. So, but it's our, the health inspectors already provide for the ordinances.
I'll just share from, I think the collaboration that's being discussed, our exact status of it, is collaboration between health department, city, city existing staff and all that, of how we can meet that health inspector, how we can, you know, include that in the things, the way the city's operating. It seems to be making good progress, from what I could tell. I'm not an expert on the subject, but from a listener in the room, seems to be making good progress.
This, this is the first step.
Right, right.
All the comments about us being required to have a health inspector on board is a statutory requirement for city government. Is that?
Currently in the ordinances, that's correct.
It's not statutory.
No, not statutory.
Oh, okay.
I guess my only concern is, you know, especially right now with this whole coronavirus thing. And we like to think that our, our people in government would never attempt to usurp our constitutional rights. But right now, many of our constitutional rights are being impinged upon because of the fear of the coronavirus, coronavirus, anyway, COVID nineteen. And I guess my concern is that we may have the best of intentions here tonight, but what happens in a year or two or five when somebody decides this to use in a manner that, you know, us as a council never even considered? I guess I'm concerned about the over and ever encroaching arm of government on the ability of the citizen to live their life. And I don't know exactly what all the parameters of this health inspector might include, but that's a concern that I have.
Just as sure.
Necessary. Things don't get done if government doesn't step in. I agree with you. I don't like to have government run my life either, but if I don't do the things that are right and proper, sometimes the government has to come in and say, hey, dude, straighten it out.
I'll just give you guys, my opinion is, I think there's been a number of people in the community who've done a lot of research, expressed concerns to the mayor about us, about us following through on the ordinances that the city has and really paying attention to substandard housing at the level we should. I don't mean that as a criticism. I think it's just, it's been a, it's been brought forth by a number of people in the community. So the mayor assembled a group of diverse people to, to, to look at that and try to solve the issue, and I think this is just a step to take money that's historically been tasked. take money that's historically been tagged for purpose and put it in a fund to comply in a more, in a more forthright manner or a more visible manner with the, with the ordinance. And so I'm in support of this, but I also agree that we have to continue to be having this. It, this isn't, I don't think this intended to corner us into hiring a health inspector and making a wholesale change on that issue at this point in time. But I think that group's doing really good work to be sensitive to the concerns you have and to look at what other communities are doing on this issue as well. I've been really impressed with the ideas that are coming from that particular group and how, how they're looking at things.
And you've explained my concern very well, Ty. And I, I guess that is my concern. Apparently, I may not understand this as well as I maybe should, but if we're not boxing ourselves into a corner where we're going to have to hire a health inspector. If, if we hire a health inspector, is that something the council would be involved with that then, Jim? Well, the position is already called out in the ordinances, but in reviewing the salary schedules back even before me, we never really showed that in there. And I know that Terry and the mayor and I have had some discussions about how we might be able to address it and Ty touched on it too, that we might have to pull in some of our other community partners to actually cover the bases on what that, that would require. I think that some of the things that are in there could probably be covered by our building inspectors. And so again, and we're, we're working on that. But as has been mentioned here, in my opinion, this is just a first step in moving in the direction of trying perhaps to reorganize those ordinances in a manner that we would be able to address some of those things with our existing personnel.
I mean, if, 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 if people are speeding too much on the major thoroughfares in your community, sometimes as a community, you might decide to focus more on the enforcement of that thoroughfare to try to slow traffic down. And I think that that's kind of in a metaphorical sense, what is being looked at here.
Does this apply to all housing units or is it just restricted? Does it apply to individual housing units or duplexes or is it more apartment houses or?
This, this set of ordinances primarily deal with housing, leased housing as opposed to privately owned houses or, I mean, it also talks about multiple dwellments. But this is, yeah, multifamily, sorry, but this is just, the ordinance provides for the creation of the fund. We're following the preexisting ordinance. We're not changing the law. We're not changing the budget. The money's already allocated. The fund does, the ordinance already in place does provide a source for the funding. One of that, one of those sources is whatever the council may designate. It's subpart D under that statute. Such other revenues is the city may from time to time authorized to be paid into the fund. And that's all this is doing tonight. The money's already allocated, the money's already budgeted and the fund's already called for in the existing ordinance. So the, and this is a step, the first step in the implementation of the, some of the suggestions that have been made. But that's all this is tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call. Is anybody else having questions?
Missley.
Aye.
Backenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Rieker.
May.
Ostendorf.
Aye. I think motion passes seven to one. Item number six is slated in German. Would you please do roll call one more time, please?
Yes. Missley.
Aye.
Backenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Rieker.
Aye.
Ostendorf.
Aye. Okay. Thank, thank you everyone. You're, you're all appreciated. Thank you much.
Conference room, you can leave first.